Okay, I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council at 6:30 PM on March 9th, 2021. Would you please call the roll?
Council members Chalam Charla.
Here.
Howell.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
And Kozlowski.
Here. If everybody would please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda updates?
You have one agenda update this evening. Item number eight has been amended. Copies have been provided to the city council and are available to the public at the table in the back of the room.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now do business from the floor. This is an opportunity for anybody that would like to, to address the council on topics or items that are not on the agenda. So do we have any requests to speak?
You have one request to speak this evening under Business from the Floor. It is from Sandra Munoz-Bradman.
Come on down. Welcome.
Hi, nice to be here. So my name is Sandra Munoz-Bradman. I'm the Executive Director for Project Hope Center. It's a nonprofit organization and, let's see, I formed it in 2015 and what I do is I provide residential placement services for female inmates who are incarcerated in Folsom Women's Facility. And, sorry, I have a hard time breathing through this. So what I do is I place them into residential programs to the county that they're returning to, but being that COVID's happened, I really don't do that anymore. So what I'm placing myself to do now is in 2017, we opened up a home which is called Project Hope House. And we've had women go, come in and leave. We just had one lady, she graduated from our program. She was there for two years and two months. She went to Texas. She reunited with her daughter. And so what we're doing now is we're changing it from a two-year program to a three-day program. And so I'm working with other nonprofits in the city and in surrounding areas. So the ladies are going to come in, it's going to be like a retreat home. So women that are in other programs can come in, stay with us up to three days. And so all of the funding, the reason why I'm saying all this is, all of our funding mechanism is through our shop at 815 Sutter Street. It's called the Vintage Pink Door. We don't get any state grants, county grants, none of it. Everything that we do, that we fund is through the shop. So the reason why I'm there, why I'm here is because we're looking to expand and hopefully open up a Sunday market. And what that would be is every Sunday, opening up the plaza to having curators come in and sell their products.
Which plaza are you talking about?
The historic Folsom Plaza.
Around the turntable?
Yes.
Okay.
So where there's a Saturday.
Where the market is on Saturday?
Yes, exactly. Where the farmer's market. So it would be sort of like that, but on Sundays.
Okay.
And so we kind of already have, we have a list of curators who are interested in doing it, so that's why I'm here. I wanted to present that to you all. And if it's something that would be approved, that'd be awesome. So it would not only help fund our home, a percentage of it, we would give a percentage to the Historic Association. And we would also encourage other merchants to open up a booth there too, so they can sell their products at no charge. They would come in, set up their area, advertise their store like we would, and it would be a win-win situation. So that's, that's why I'm here. I hope I explained that right.
And I just want to encourage people to patronize your business. I've actually bought quite a bit from you guys in the last couple of years, and they have wonderful, wonderful things in their store, so.
Thank you, Carrie. Yes, you've, you bought some pretty stuff.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Terrific.
So yeah, that's what we do. And that's what I'm, that's what we're hoping to expand.
Okay. Well, the thing to do would be to reach out to the city manager tomorrow. She'll be ready to take your call, Elaine Anderson, right here. And she can direct you to the right pathway to get permits and start the process of getting proper approvals for that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
Terrific. Yeah, thanks, thanks for joining us tonight. Okay, any other requests to speak?
You have no other requests to speak this evening.
Okay, last call for anybody that's got a topic not on the agenda. Come on down. Something not on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, send it forward.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Hang on just a second.
Is it Hari? I'm sorry.
Yes, Hari Gadraju.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Go ahead.
Welcome. Thank you very much.
So, good evening, everyone. So I'm here to represent the traffic and safety concerns in Folsom Ranch. So being it a very new neighborhood, we still do not have enough stop signs or speed limits and those kind of sorts. So I really request all of your council members to guide us to have more safety throughout our neighborhoods. So recently, we had an accident of the kid.
Hari, can you speak into the mic? See if we could hear you a little better.
There you go.
Yeah. So recently, we had a accident of, accident for the kid, so who almost lost his leg. So we do not have any park in the neighborhood where kids can play. We have a lot of slits. We already have 400 family members there living right now. So every day, everyone, all the kids are playing in the streets. So it's very dangerous for them without having these stops, enough stop signs, enough street lights and enough other safety. So other, other safety-related things. So I really request those come as soon as possible. So my, so my neighborhood community member will talk about why we need the park more and we want to know when the park is going to come there, first park.
Okay, all right. Can I just ask you a question?
Yes.
Have you spoken to the Traffic Safety Committee that we have for the city yet?
We did not reach out to them. So we had a meeting with YK.
Okay, great.
From the Samastik Group, two, three days ago. We have a organization, nonprofit organization there. So who wants to represent those issues to the council members? We are thankful to YK to come and meet us and talk to us. And he recommended to reach out to the Traffic and Safety Committee.
Excellent, yeah. Please follow through on that because they'll, then you can have a open forum with the staff that takes care of traffic controls.
Yes. But if we do not get proper response, can we come here again so that we can help us or?
You are always welcome here.
Okay. So but do you have any influence to talk to the Traffic and Safety Committee?
None at all. I'm kidding. Of course we do.
Okay. Okay, yeah, thank you.
There's just, there's a process to putting these things in place.
Sure, sure.
So we have to determine where the best places are for them, when to install them, all those types of things.
Yes.
And that's the place to have that discussion first, so that we have something to act on.
Yeah. So we are here because there is some, a lot of urgency in it right now. So we cannot wait for the process to complete and put small things in place. So we really, we really have a lot of urgency in that issue.
I understand.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is Seva Bolaneni.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Just want to follow up with what Mr. Hari mentioned. So I really want to double-click on the traffic issues because there is no park, which is my actual topic I want to cover. Kids are playing on the streets and with spring and summer around the corner, they're going to coming out and continue playing on the streets more and more. And the incident that he mentioned happened exactly last week around the same time, and it was very unfortunate. So that's why we want to expedite the process of park. Like, I'm one of the first batch of people who moved into that community. It's almost two and a half years. And we are paying around $330 Melrose monthly, and we don't have park at all. Last year, around the same time we came here to represent the park and we requested for tennis courts, but now we don't have any request, we just want a park. So I, I don't know, I think at least for traffic safety, we have some process to follow, but for the park, we have no idea how can we expedite that because it's not actually 400. Around 600 families moved in already there.
The population's growing rapidly. Elaine, did you?
Seva, go ahead. You finished your remarks. We've got additional remarks.
Yeah, so if the park comes, right, as a parent, we can take them and leave in the park rather than letting them play on the street and disturb other neighbors, also get them hurt, like they get hurt, right? So, yeah. But at least what I heard from people, again, I don't know, it could be speculation or rumor, it's going to take another one year, which is, which is definitely long, so.
So Seva and Hari, our Parks and Recreation Director, Lorraine Pedroni is actually here, and she's in the back of the room, and I'm sure that she would be happy to meet with you, just chat out in the hallway to answer your questions. Okay?
Yeah, she's, she's back in the corner right there. All right.
I'll find you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, any other comments on things not on the agenda?
We have no more requests.
Okay, call the first item.
Okay, your first item this evening is Scheduled Presentation, item number one. This is a resolution of commendation honoring the Folsom Telegraph for being the oldest business in Folsom. We have Bill Sullivan.
Okay. All right. So this is a resolution by the city of Folsom commending the Folsom Telegraph on being the oldest business in Folsom and in most other places, if you looked around. It says, "The Folsom Telegraph is the oldest newspaper in Sacramento County and the fourth oldest weekly in the state. And whereas the Folsom Telegraph has been informing residents of news for 165 years, and whereas the Folsom Telegraph started as the Granite Journal, founded and published in March of 1856 by surgeon Dr. L. Bradley, and whereas the Folsom Telegraph was originally a four-page newspaper published in the basement of a building at the corner of Sutter and Wool Streets, it was printed with handset type until 1933. And whereas the Folsom Telegraph has gone through many name changes through the years from Granite Journal, the Folsom Dispatch, Mooney's Folsom, Placerville Express, the Folsom Semi-Weekly Telegraph, Folsom Weekly, and finally, the Folsom Telegraph. And whereas the Folsom Telegraph was once known as the Wandering Press, since the printing press was moving from place to place until it found its home in Folsom. And whereas the publication techniques have changed through the years from a printing press to a Goss Urbanite Offset Press, which printed higher-quality papers at a faster speed, to a technological jump when the layout changed from the manual pasting up of pages to building pages on a computer in the late 1990s, and continued to make technological changes in 2002 with expansion to include an online presence. And whereas the Folsom Telegraph continues to provide the community with accurate news and features in its weekly newspaper, I now therefore, Michael D. Kozlowski, Mayor of the city of Folsom, on behalf of the city of Folsom, do hereby commend and congratulate the Folsom Telegraph for being the oldest business in Folsom and thank them for their 165 years of service to Folsom, passed and approved this ninth day of March 2021."
What's kind of scary there is a lot of those procedures I actually remember, and I don't think that's really good for me. It has aged myself right there, but I could sit here and think, I do have a great staff, a passionate staff that works hard to continue to bring the community newspaper, but what really brings that newspaper to the community is the community itself. All of you, the residents, our readers, the leaders, everybody has supported this newspaper for 165 years, and it's that support that makes this possible in very different times from 1965.
And the tagline used to-
165.
The tagline used to be "The best news by a damn site."
That's actually still on there.
Good.
Are you reading it?
Yes, I do.
I actually know you read it. Okay, so thank you, all of you, for everything.
Terrific. Yeah, 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 yeah. I just wanted to say one thing. I got, I, the dream of a lifetime is being able to be a writer in a newspaper, and Bill has given me two opportunities. We'll see if there's ever any more. But if you read my article this week, I point out that there's a whole bunch of newspapers across the country that are way younger than the Folsom Telegraph. And I also recommend that everybody treat the Folsom Telegraph as one of the most important businesses to support in Folsom, just like we have done for everybody else this year, because we are stewards of the information that we get. And if we want accurate information, we have to have local reporting. Okay? Thank you.
One other thing to add, since, yeah, we want your column on time. But as Mike said, that's one of the great things, is we have our leaders. Elaine writes a monthly column for us, he's writing a monthly column. Pretty much everybody on this council has been involved somehow. And it's because of that, and like I said, you guys all came through. This week, we have a paper that's four times the size it's been in probably the last 20 years, I would say, because of the support for this anniversary, so thank you.
One round.
The only thing missing from that family shot is the cat.
Call the next item.
Okay. Your next item is number two, Proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom, proclaiming March 2021 as American Red Cross Month in the city of Folsom. We have Eileen Reynolds here tonight to receive.
I will be, I will be reading this proclamation for the mayor, Kozlowski, proclaiming the month of March 2021 as the American Red Cross Month in the city of Folsom. Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to honor the kindness of our neighbors who aid families in need every day in our community across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering. And whereas during the trying times of the coronavirus pandemic, people have stepped up to help others in need, whether it was responding to this year's record-breaking disaster across the country, or rolling up their sleeves to give blood when our nation faces severe blood shortage. And whereas here in the California Gold Country region, families have relied on local Red Cross volunteers for comfort and hope while coping with the recent Northern California wildfires. The Red Cross served over 165,000 meals and snacks to those in need and provided 38,903 hotel units for safe shelter. In addition to helping family and neighbors where at, here at home, many local Red Cross volunteers also deployed virtually to assist with disasters across the country. And whereas local volunteers have also supported families in other ways, since January 2020, volunteers have responded to 500 home fires, helping 1,983 people address urgent needs for food, lodging, and recovery support. Last year, the Red Cross hosted more than 300 regional blood drives and collected 5,785 units of blood-saving, life-saving blood. Red Cross volunteers provided emergency services for 2,118 people through our, through our service to the Armed Forces Programs and enrolled 16,329 people in first aid CPR, AED training. And whereas this life-saving work is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. Nearly 200 years since the birth of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance her noble legacy, and we ask others to join in the commitment to care for people in need. Now therefore, I, Michael D. Kozlowski, Mayor of the city of Folsom, on behalf of the city, Folsom City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2021 as Red Cross Month and encourage community members to reach out and support their humanitarian mission. Proclaim this ninth day of March 2021, Eileen Reynolds, Chairperson for the Board of Directors for the American Red Cross California Gold Country Region, will accept this proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming March 2021 as the American Red Cross Month in the city of Folsom.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Rodriguez, and thank you, Mayor Kozlowski, and esteemed members of the, of the city council. There were a lot of numbers in that, in that proclamation. We, we serve a lot of people. We represent 26 counties all the way to the northern, all the way to the Oregon border north and Nevada and even out to the coast. So as you know, most of them were on fire last year, so we're very, very busy. The reason that Red Cross has been designated and proclaimed by presidents for the last 78 years as, March as Red Cross Month is to build awareness so that people will volunteer. People will volunteer their time and effort, people will give life-saving blood, and people will also donate money, because we can't do what we, all those, we can't execute all of those statistics without, without money and people to help us. So for those of you listening or in the audience, if you're interested in volunteering for the Red Cross, I urge you to go to redcross.org. You can visit any media site, any social media site that you prefer, and it's ARC, which stands for American Red Cross Gold Country, ARC Gold Country. And if you want to give blood, redcrossblood.org. So I encourage all of you to get involved in, in March as Red Cross Month, but also anytime that you feel like you'd like to give back to your community. It's a, it's a great feeling to do it. So thank you very much. Thank you, city council, very much for recognizing us. We appreciate it very much.
Okay, call the next item, please.
This takes you to your consent calendar this evening.
All right, is there anybody that would like to discuss any of the consent items?
I'll move consent.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Chalam Charla.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes. Okay, new business.
Okay, your first new business item is item number eight. This is ordinance number 1311, an ordinance of the city of Folsom amending certain sections in Title IV of the Folsom Municipal Code regarding the Arts and Cultural Commission. This will be introduction and first reading of the ordinance, and just as a reminder, this is the item that was amended.
Any comments, questions, presentation?
I would just thank staff for their time. I know this is a very trivial item, and it really is, really has been bothering me. And I did-
And there's no one who knows grammar better than you, Sarah.
And I did check with the, the chair and the vice chair of the, the commission to see if they had any issues. They don't. They say they actually refer to it as the Arts and Culture Commission, so we're all on the same page.
Finally got everything lined up.
For those of you who don't know what we're talking about, we're dropping the AL from culture to make it just the Arts and Culture Commission instead of the former name.
Thank you, Sarah. I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Okay, call the roll.
Councilmember Chalam Charla.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes. Okay, next item.
Okay, item number nine is your fiscal year 2021 to '22 budget workshop.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Stacy Tumani, Finance Director and CFO. Tonight is the official kickoff for the fiscal year 2122 budget process. Our budget team has been busy meeting with all the department heads and working through the budget requests, but before we get too far into the process, we wanted to have this budget workshop to ask some questions of you, to be sure that all of your priorities are incorporated into the city manager's proposed budget. Here we have the budget presentation schedule. Tonight, you have this first workshop, and then on April 27th, we will present the city manager's proposed operating and capital budgets. May 11th will be the public hearing, and then on May 25th will be your first opportunity to adopt the budget. Before we get into the questions tonight, I wanted to present the comparison here, fiscal year 21 budget that you approved, for a total of 89.5 million. And then the second column, fiscal year 22, is our as-is budget. And what this is, is it's just the categories increased for the MOU increases for salary benefits, and then some adjustments for one-time budget allocations that were in the fiscal year 21 budget. And I have this slide here because what it's showing is we have an increase of about 2.6 million between fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22, if we really do nothing to add any new allocations to the budget. This is just basically the MOU increases and some other adjustments that I'll go over here. So the top, general government, we're down a little bit. There was some turnover in staffing that helped to reduce that a little bit, and also the election costs were included in the fiscal year 21 budget, so we have some savings there. Community development is down just a little bit because we had a grant that was included in fiscal year 21's expenses. For fire and police, they're both up for their MOU increases, and then also we trued back up their capital budgets for vehicle purchases because it went down significantly last year as a method of balancing the budget. Public Works is just the MOU increases. Culture and Recreation, you're seeing a big decrease there, and that's because the Aquatic Center renovation was included in fiscal year 21's budget, so now that's been taken out as it's completed. So again, total, we're right now just looking at about 91.8 million, $2.6 million difference, just under 3% as we move forward. We're working right now on our revenue projections. We go through line by line, and at this point, we have about a million-dollar shortfall for us to get to this 91.8 million dollars of expenditures. We do have many of those short-term, one-time mechanisms that we could still use this year. Those were things like keeping vacant positions frozen and things like that. So we'll be working with the city manager to go back through those and see which ones make sense to do again as we move forward in this process. So I just have four questions, and Mayor, I'm not sure how you want to facilitate this, but we're hoping to get your feedback tonight on these so that we can incorporate it and bring it back to you in the proposed budget. The first one here is, with limited allocate, resources to allocate across all functions, are you still in favor of this overall allocation? And we, go ahead.
Maybe if I can just make one suggestion, go through all of the questions-
Okay.
-and then let's circle back to the first one and take comments.
Perfect, okay. So we bring this pie chart to you every year. You pretty much see the same allocation every year. And so our question is just, are you still happy with the way that we are dividing up the resources? You have fire and police at about 50% total, community development is about 6%, public works at 8%, general government at 12%, and culture and recreation at 17%. And they go up and down by a percent or two, but this is the general allocation. Question number two is, if projected revenues, if we see adjustments to sales tax or things like that, are able to exceed these as-is budgeted expenditures of 91.8 million at this time, and so you have a budget surplus, are you more interested in using that surplus to replenish the general fund reserve, the rainy day fund, or do you want to allocate those funds to some budget enhancements? And if you're interested in budget enhancements, we go to the second question here, what would be your top three priorities that you would like to see put into the budget when we bring it back to you? And then something that is always available, question number four is, if you'd like to scale back on things that we're currently doing, that could give you additional resources to do something else. So question number four, is this, is there anything that you'd like to scale back on so that you can use the funding elsewhere? And that's what we have for you tonight.
So if I can ask my colleagues maybe to be methodical here, and let's discuss item number one, the first question, and just, and you know, in general terms, how do you feel about this? Just, you know, in general terms, how do you feel about this? And maybe we just go around. Carrie?
That's pretty much where we've been over the last many years. Even when we were in times of recession, we're still in a weird place right now. So, I have no problem with keeping this generally as we have done for many, many years. And the only other comment that I would make, and I had this conversation with the city manager last week, is if we are able to open up more programming, because the big hit that we've taken has been in programming. It's been Parks and Rec activities, the Aquatic Center, the sports complex, all of those places that, and in addition to all of the rentals of the city facilities, which basically evaporated all of last year. That was a significant hit on the budget. So, my personal feeling is if we get out of this COVID thing and we can start, excuse me, renting those facilities and putting those programs back in place, I'd really like to see that. But given the situation and the amount of money that we pulled out of the general fund that was supposed to be in the reserves, I'd like to see us take a look at where revenues increase over what we are anticipating in this coming year's budget. I'd like to see half of that money go back into the reserve, and half of that money be used in probably predominantly to get some of those programs back up and running. Because most of those, they generate additional revenue.
I guess that begs the question, in your preliminary planning, how much of that programming are you anticipating resuming during FY22?
It's still very unknown. So, at this point, we have revenue projections pretty much at where we were this year. Now, what we said last year is that we would come back to you if things started to really pick up.
Sure.
The community's willing to come back to the programs, then you could allocate additional expenditures.
Okay, very good.
We kind of see this-
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add that, you know, just to add on to what Ms. Tumani said, that this will likely be another dynamic budget year of, you know, needing to be flexible as public health orders change. Because we just don't have a crystal ball right now. So, we're kind of shooting low and hoping that, you know, things are better than they are right now, that's for sure.
Over-deliver, I like it.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't have any problem with the way the pie is divvied up. I guess I would just be curious to know if these percentages are pretty consistent with other agencies, especially the culture and recreation? Or do we spend more on culture and recreation than neighboring cities? I mean, you probably don't know that off the top of your head, but that's something I'd be curious about.
Okay, I'll get that for you.
YK, any thoughts on this particular question?
Oh, it is very colorful. I like that. Thank you for making that more attractive. My only thing is, not knowing all the details inside, I'm still trying to dig into. After COVID is a new norm, we are adopting to accept few things, and this is how the life is going to be down the road. So, anything may be the recommendation I may be looking forward from city manager and you. Whether any recommendations that because of the COVID, we may have to change certain percentages from here to here. So, that may be the one. I'm looking on this question number one at this point.
Okay, just meaning kind of accepting COVID as a way of life in some areas, and that it might just affect how we deliver.
At least for coming fiscal year, and maybe a little bit extended to next fiscal year.
Understood, yeah.
Right? Thank you.
Very good. Rosario?
So, when I first looked at this, I thought, well, you know, I don't know if this looks good. I don't, you know, as a sort of a newbie looking at the finances, and I mean, it looks good, but I'm glad to hear from, you know, Carrie, who has been here a long time, that can, you know, confirm that it looks very similar to what our past budgets look like. You know, with police and fire, you know, getting half of it, that's really our, you know, one of the things that I hear from the community quite a bit is, you know, I feel safe, and ensuring that their safety always remains a priority to me, and it looks like it does, so.
Yeah, that would have been my comment, is it seems like we are, you know, putting our money where our real priorities are. So, I think it's, as Carrie put it, it's a nice, stable planning process that we've used in the past.
In fact, I think I would venture to guess that the only thing that has changed probably over much of the 20-plus years that I've been sitting up here is the debt service, because we have retired a bunch of debt. We had a mortgage-burning party several years ago when this building was paid off. Well, we didn't, but I tried to. But there's, you know, the cost of many of the buildings in the city has, during the time period that I've been on the council, those construction costs have been paid off. So, it's basically like paying off the mortgages on a number of relatively newer facilities. So, that's a good thing, that the debt service is only 1%.
That is excellent. Judicious planning by past councils and city managers. Thank you. All right, I guess back to you, Carrie. The question number two, if you'll start us off, thoughts on that?
I think I kind of already made my comment. If we have unexpected revenues coming in, I'd like to see, you know, not necessarily down to the penny, but about half of that money go back into replenishing the $5 million that we pulled out of the reserves last year, and the other half of that money being spent to get programs back up and running that we really haven't run for the last year, because most of those things will generate additional revenue. So, that probably answers number three. It's, you know, a lot of it's going to be parks and rental activities. The, you know, hopefully, the Rotary Club will be back in the clubhouse, because, you know, right now, all these organizations that we typically rent facilities or have training, everybody's doing it by Zoom. And I'd like to think that at some point, people are actually going to get back in the same building once the vaccine's been, you know, more widely distributed and this pandemic is hopefully going away. And I can't think of anything that we're doing right now, given the cuts that we've made in the last year. I don't see that we're doing anything right now that I don't see as valuable. So, I can't think of anything that I think, at this moment, needs to be scaled back.
Gotcha. Sarah?
I would just say for question number two, put it back into the rainy day fund to get us back up to that 15%.
YK, any thoughts?
That's easy. My thought is, I know we cut quite a few services, especially on Parks and Rec, and that directly impacts the people who's going, kids and all those. I would like to take a look at those when there is an excess funds are coming. No, I'm always for savings. Please don't take me wrong. But since we cut down almost 50% of the Parks and Rec on other services, which we think are, you know, we've got to take a look at it before we can save it. That's my sensation, but here I am.
Thanks.
Very good. Rosario?
One of my highest priorities is to get that rainy day fund replenished. But I also know that as the summer months coming and as we get our programs back, we are going to have a huge need within Folsom families to have their kids back into a routine and getting them into programs. And so, you know, I walked in here saying, oh, I think the rainy day fund is the highest priority, but I think getting programs back and giving families an outlet to be able to get their kids out and about and get those programs back up and going, which actually end up creating revenue from those programs.
Yeah, I mean, that's the missing piece of the puzzle in this discussion so far, is that we didn't cut programs so much as we were unable to operate them because of COVID restrictions. So, restoring them is absolutely the thing that should be on the table.
Yeah.
But we didn't cut them, per se.
That's right on. We could not have the programs for the public health order, so we had to sacrifice that part of our budget, which was heavy temporary staff for Parks and Rec.
And I'd like to think that, you know, over the course of the next year, we're not going to do it in this fiscal year, but I'd like to think that, you know, by the middle of 2022, we should be able to have the vast majority of those programs up and running again, and those revenue streams will backfill. And I think we could very well be back to where we need to be by the middle of 2022.
We're hoping so. And I'm very proud of the creativity and determination of our Parks and Rec Department especially, who, you know, put together a REC program, you know, to help out during this pandemic. They kept the preschool running. We were doing all kinds of things, you know, transitioning to virtual programming, and we had in-person programming as well just to help as much as we could with that tremendous caregiver parental burden out there that we're quite aware of.
And I'm guessing that, you know, the vast majority of the parents that have been homeschooling and, you know, had their kids in the house for the last year can't wait for those programs to open back up again.
Yeah.
Undoubtedly, okay. Well, at the risk of sort of repeating ourselves a little bit, maybe I can rephrase number three slightly in that if we are all, you know, in agreement that, you know, restoring our programs is step one, refilling our, or, excuse me, step one A, and step one B is replenishing the reserve fund to an appropriate level. If there is some delta, where there's, you know, a little bit of extra money, what sorts of enhancements to city services would you like to see funded?
Well, I'm still concerned about where we're going to be on the public work side with whatever's going to happen with the organic waste program. So, I'm worried about what the cost could be in the short term to the city for that. And, you know, if there's a way that we can attempt to absorb that so that we don't have to go with some sort of an increase in the solid waste rates.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm just worried.
Softening the blow of any rate.
I'm being a worry-wor.
Well, that's practical advice. That's a good idea. Sarah, thoughts?
I would say park maintenance. You know, taking the guidance of the Parks and Rec Commission, because I know they have a priority list that they have created. And then the second thing for me would be cleaning and clearing open space. So, whether it's, you know, additional services to get out there and clean up, you know, from a former homeless camp to clearing dead brush and stuff to reduce fire hazard, those would be my things.
Gotcha. YK, any other enhancements you'd like to see if they become fiscally possible?
Sarah stole my thunder. I was on Parks and Rec Commission, and I was inventory, looking at all those. And I see how they come up with, you know, $10 million, and they get only $800,000. And they look for, can I get $30,000 more? Something like that. That's my intent, even when I said before, cut the services. That's not my intent. Like, these things, when I have seen practically there, they need $30,000 more so that they can get that. You know, several community members in those neighborhoods are happy, right? The other one, I know we say it, public safety. I'm debating between third and fourth, but I can wait for that one. Bringing some more, especially when we are crossing the street in the night, it's kind of a little bit dangerous, to be honest. You know, identifying, again, I may go and talk at the Public Safety Committee as a member or a citizen. Bringing some more on that side, you know, anything we can do is the thing I'm going to be looking at especially.
I can't think of anything else. I mean, it's a really, I think for me, it's a kind of a tough question because I don't have the, I don't have, I don't know where some of the greatest need is. And that's something that maybe I would turn to, you know, you, Stacy, and say, where, you know, out of the budget, where do you see the opportunities that maybe? I just don't know, because I'm not in the weeds of some of, you know, the greatest needs in our city when it comes to budget, so.
That's fair, and there'll be plenty of opportunity to continue to talk through these things. This is not the last opportunity. My only thing is, I, you know, I suppose I'm, my comment was that I'd like to see us kind of do what Sarah suggested, which is make sure that we have the ability to do, you know, cleaning of open spaces. And, you know, part, you know, that's for some obvious reasons. The flip side of that, though, is I'd really like to see us create at least a modest grant program for the agency or the private agencies in Folsom who provide a bridge out of homelessness, like Heart, like others like that. And I'm not looking for some, you know, extraordinary amount of money. They do a lot of great work with donations. But I think a little helping hand would go a long way. And there's a lot of different ways that could be used. And I think a, you know, a request for proposals of sort for whatever it is that we decide to carve out of the budget would be appropriate there. Okay, so, do we want to address item number four? I think we've kind of hit these, but-
I just have one thing to add, and I'll piggyback on your comment. Certainly not saying that I wouldn't want to scale it back, but I do think because homelessness is such, you know, it's at the forefront of everybody's mind, it's just a very important topic. I think it would be useful to know exactly what the city spends to address homelessness, whether it's, you know, directly like the Navigator. I mean, if there's a way for you to quantify that, just so we know, so the public knows. Of course, understanding this is a function of county government, not city government typically, but it would be good to know that.
Yeah, definitely. That context is important. Okay, any thoughts about number four?
I already made my comments, so I'm good on all of it.
Thank you. Sarah, any other final thoughts? YK?
Yeah, I saved quite a few for number four.
Okay, fire away. We've got all night.
As I was mentioning before, you know, I was debating between third and fourth and the, you know, crossing the streets, you know. I love when I, you know, traveling to the Folsom South, the first stoplight is the red lights. I like it. And if I'm going on the, I'm just giving one example. Gulf Link Drive. Trails crosses that 45 mile per speed lane. It's very hard. Things like those, is a simple example I'm giving, you know, what services we can do, whether the flashlight can come and at least alert the people. Otherwise, the trails are crossing, and the 45 miles per hour, most of them go 50. So, that's that kind of thing we may have to look into from the public safety perspective. And the other one, I know whomsoever I talk, even our city manager said several times, you know, our staff is very short, you know. We are delivering more services than we have the staff. I sincerely would like to request for the respective department budgets, whether they can explore the interns or student assistants or from the Folsom Lake College, wherever it is. Because, number one, you'll get the help. And number two, it is reasonably less cost for the city. Number three, it's very important in government. We are brain-draining. Youngsters are not joining that many in government services. Maybe showing them early on the service mindset for them by inviting. So, that's my biggest one. The reason why I'm offering that approach, even for most of the departments, even one or two student assistants, $12 dollars per hour. Folsom is fond of volunteerism. Sometimes it is very hard to manage those volunteers with the city staff. We don't have city staff by putting these kind of people. That's my highest request. And the other one is also, I know Sarah mentioned, in everyone's mind, homelessness. If you'll open up the Folsom chart or wherever it is. So, I highly encourage, I second that, what city is doing, whatever it is, right? You know, it's more visible, and paying a little bit more attention on that one, you know, where it is necessary. It's not that I'm promoting the homelessness in Folsom. That's not my thing. It's not that I'm promoting the homelessness in Folsom, that's not my thing. I'm putting the human nature in my mind, not one thing. And the third one is, I know I spoke to before Mr. Hillman, CAPS volunteers program. It's right now about 70 or 74. What will it take to increase either CAPS or CERT? At least taking initiation is one of those services. I'm thinking in my mind whether we can consider, whether it is going to reflect into another $20,000 more or not, I don't know. But those are the things, you know, I'm thinking whether we can bring some changes in this year. Right? Thank you. Sorry, I know.
No, it's okay.
I saved because that is for any services.
Perfectly appropriate.
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. All right, this is a public hearing, so let's have the comments from.
You had one request to speak this evening from Loretta Hedinger.
Welcome.
Hello. First off, I'm not asking for any new money. I have some prepared remarks. Forty-one years ago tomorrow, I started working in Folsom's brand-new planning department. In these 41 years, I have a pretty good track record of accurately predicting the trends and outcomes in Folsom. I say this not to be bragging, but in hopes that you will take seriously the current prediction I have. Without a parking structure actually in the works, the next 10 years will see a downward spiral in the historic district. In contrast.
I thought you said you weren't asking for any new money, Loretta.
I'm not.
That's only $20 million.
No new money tonight. No new money tonight. The last 20 years, we've really had gotten some hard-won prosperity going, both commercially and residentially. A parking structure is a big-ticket item, not to be undertaken lightly. I'm not asking for a full-on commitment to a parking structure tonight. But you could at least commit some staff time to starting a serious investigation of possibilities. I'm asking, would you please direct finance to investigate all the financial possibilities, even remote ones, and ask Public Works to get serious about evaluating sites? No one seriously believes that the feel-good concept of getting Americans out of their cars and into alternate transportation is going to happen in the next 10 years, probably not the 20 years. Cultural change is very slow. Unless you want to gamble the serious investment that the private sector and the city have invested in the historic district on a wishful premise, you have two choices, both of them hard. One is to start the process for a planning, for a parking structure, and the other is to stop new development on Sutter Street. Neither, neither one is easy. I would love to be wrong about the future without more parking. Why do I doubt that we can do it without a parking structure? The great majority of development in Folsom and the region was designed around the automobile. Even if we all decided tomorrow to get rid of gas-guzzling autos, our built environment works against it. Americans will turn to electric cars before they turn to transit bikes and ride sharing as their sole transportation. Pandemic has indeed shown us that Amazon can ful-, excuse me, can fulfill a lot of needs. But the pandemic has also cemented Americans' love for their automobiles. Transit has lost much of its past gains. People just feel safer in their cars. Most vacation plans being made now are for road trips. It's all well and good to reduce parking requirements for new development and design for it, but applicability to existing development is problematic. Sutter Street's parking problem is a cautionary tale about what will happen if serious parking reduction happens too far ahead of parking demand reduction. Sutter Street's parking requirement is already about half that of the rest of the city. Even using that reduced requirement, 25 years ago, we thought that Sutter Street would need four parking structures at build-out. Cutting that in half, having two structures, is a serious gamble in itself. The word I've used over and over tonight is serious. It's time, it's past time to get serious about the future of the historic district. Preliminary planning for a parking structure doesn't cost any more than some staff time, but it sends a powerful, positive message to the community. A community that is more united than I have seen them in all those 41 years, between the commercial and the residential people. We either need to start planning for a structure or stop development until we do. I'll be sending you a follow-up email with more detail, and I would be glad to respond to any questions you might have for me.
Very good, thank you. Okay, any other comments from those in the audience? Any advice is welcome. Okay, any callers? All right, back, bring it back to the council. Any final comments from the group?
Nope, I have nothing else.
Okay, excellent. Do you feel like you have enough direction?
It's very helpful direction.
There's probably some other capital improvements besides the parking structure that need to be looked at as planning exercises, just for what it's worth.
A lot of competing needs for sure, but I appreciated all your comments, and we'll take those to heart. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number 10.
All right, your last discussion item this evening is item number 10. It's a discussion of future use options for city-owned property at 405 Natoma Station Drive and direction to staff.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Lorraine Pajoni, your Parks and Rec Director. Tonight, what I'll be discussing is an item that was asked of us in the context of a workshop to look through the potential options for the use at 405 Natoma Street, also formerly occupied by the Brighton Schools. So a little bit about the parcel. It's actually a parcel within a parcel. So the property itself, the building itself, is actually surrounded by the park. And it includes the building, the outdoor area, and a little bit, actually, oddly enough, a little bit into the park. Our city property consists of about 10,000 square feet of building space, seven rooms, near typical sort of office, entry, reception area, restroom, storage, kitchen, about 8,000 square foot outside. Our prior use arrangement was with the, we leased it to the Brighton School from day one. They, so that's a little over 20 years. Vacated, they vacated in 2019. There's currently no one in the facility. Their monthly rent was about 6,500. Utilities were anywhere from 1,200 to 2,700. They paid for the alarm, and the city had about $25,000 a year just for normal maintenance of the building. The current condition, and I'll be showing you pictures here in a few minutes, they unfortunately left the building in quite, quite a mess. A lot of debris and trash inside there. They did their best, I believe, to sell off as many of their items as they could, but nonetheless left quite a bit for us to, to deal with. Lots of damage to the walls and floors, fixtures and appliances, very much either damaged or aged. There's actually 10 HVAC units on the building, which seemed like a lot to us once we did our little research and investigation. And none of those have been changed out. They are not new. They're about 20 years old. The ADA, we believe, is not to code, and there's quite a bit of interior and exterior repainting that needs to be done. Quick little view of some of that, this is existing outdoor area there with some outdoor sheds, some gardens on one side of the building. The kitchen area, it's just dated and has quite a bit of damage to it. The entry area there, that's the reception area with the green counter. One of the rooms has a nice divider in there. And then some of this is aesthetic sort of views that you're seeing here, but some of it will require quite a bit of work to repair and restore. Again, just wasn't left in great condition. And, you know, for, this is not one of those quick turnaround sort of buildings. It's going to take some work from, from floor to ceiling to restore or repair. Again, a little bit on that entrance. Since it was a daycare facility, everything's kind of in the mini, the mini format, very small bathrooms and toilets and sinks. And then there are some adult-sized facilities there as well. We've done a little bit of our own analysis of just what sort of the cost would take to just get it up to a fairly decent status. We feel like, as you saw, some more basic cleanup needs to be done. While the HVAC is not broken, it's just probably on one of those any-day sort of timelines. The ADA compliance and the interior improvements, the painting, signage, regardless who has it, would need signage, furniture and fixtures if, you know, for the inside and other TIs. So we're estimating perhaps about $350,000 just to get it cleaned up and ready for, for an option, which is what I will go into next. So what are the, kind of the highest-level options, and there's probably variations on all of these? We could retain it, and you could choose to retain it for city operations or municipal uses. It could be leased, or it could be sold. Now I'll go through each of those. Prior to COVID, when the tenant moved out, I got together with my team and I consulted with the city manager and the city attorney, but I got together with my internal team and said, hey, look at the possibility here. This is a, this is a golden egg and a gift, you know, if we could, if we could do something with it, what would it be? So we looked through all of our impacted programs. In fact, over at 48 Natoma, we had, in 1819, we had 433 classes offered at 48 Natoma, with 30%, of those on a waitlist. So we knew, we looked at those and saw which ones we could either, you know, relocate or expand. So my team began to think. So it's ideal for arts, seniors, youths. Eliminate some overcrowding, allows for weekend rentals, evening, fills a need for expanding. Certainly serves a mutual beneficial link to the Natoma Station and the Ernie Sheldon Youth Sports Complex. We didn't have a chance to vet this with our commission or anything, but this is what we had an opportunity to do at a staff level. Then COVID hit, and kind of everything was shelved. So getting the request to do, you know, bring, bring the council up to speed, that's, we hadn't done a whole lot since waiting for about a year on this. Just a little more details, if it was a city operation from Parks and Rec standpoint. There's quite a few facilities we currently have that are kind of in a facility that they weren't intended for. We have Fun Factory over at, actually, kindergarten readiness over at Hinkle Creek. That was really designed for environmental education, so that could be relocated. We have other programs over at the community center that could be relocated. Several things could be expanded. We also saw an opportunity for amazing amount of new programming. So just in a quick, kind of first brush look at it, nine or 10 programs could be relocated or expanded, 10 or so could be created. So those were our strategies about a year ago, like I said, when we were, we were thinking this through. The cost, if it was a city-maintained facility, whether it was Parks and Rec or another entity of the city, those are the sort of improvements that our own staff could actually implement. And we could, we could stagger those over a two- or three-year period, address the more important ADA issues, and focus on just kind of incrementally improving the property, beginning to generate revenue, and then, and then just slowly ramping up. We've always had the O&amp;M costs, as I mentioned earlier, about $25,000. Of course, if you're inhabiting it, those O&amp;Ms will go up a little bit. Potential revenue, of course, we'd have some upfront costs for a couple of years, but we do, we do know that we could generate revenue quite quickly in the first year, with about the third year being a fairly good revenue generating year with the same sort of O&amp;M costs. The other option, leasing the facility. This is obviously the arrangement we had with Brighton. The possible tenants, obviously, could be daycare or school for children, similar to what was there. Interestingly, it is zoned residential. So that still would allow public park or school, real estate, office, group home of six or less, but the general plan is park. Interestingly, as you saw too in that one map, there is no parking to the site itself. So just as we had done, I don't think it was ever in writing about an agreement with parking, but obviously that would have to be worked out because that facility, anybody who's in there would need to have access to that parking. Lease option, obviously, you know, would be up to the council of just how, how you wanted to entertain the lease. But sometimes you can negotiate, you know, for them to do the improvements and then for a reduced, you know, rental rate until those improvements got, got completed. When, when this facility was vacated, I received a call from the owner of the daycare that just bought the other Brighton in Granite Bay, and I asked him, you know, how. So he bought another daycare facility, but converted it into the type of facility, daycare facility, he wanted. And I asked him how much he had to put into it to make it his, you know, his facility the way he wanted it. And he said he actually invested about $1 million. So I don't know how that would translate here in terms of, you know, if that would be something similar. We would still probably be likely, and that's all negotiable and can be part of an agreement, but just what parts the city would still be required to, to maintain. The reason we maintain the landscaping is the park irrigation is on the same system as the school site. So it would be kind of awkward for, to have two different vendors providing that service. So, and in the past, we've done the HVAC and building maintenance. Obviously, with, with a lease, there's, you know, revenue stream that you would have access to. You'd need to decide just what arrangements prior to that in terms of the upfront, you know, any repairs or anything that you would expect from your lease, leasing to do. In talking with a commercial, local commercial broker, we got the ranges of anywhere from 2 to 250 a square foot for leasing property, which is quite a bit more than what we were getting with the Brighton School, but nonetheless, that is the current rate. Given the current condition of the facility, it'd probably be on that lower end. We'd still have some costs associated with being involved with the facility, since it would be ours. And when you minus out those costs, the net revenue could be, you know, in that range of 15,000 to 20,000 a month. The other option is selling the property. The city council would have to deem that surplus. The property would have to be put on the affordable housing list. And of course, you have that unique situation with parking. And then, of course, I'll talk about the pros and cons of all of these options. Building could be sold as-is, of course, and then discuss those repairs and replacements, how that you'd negotiate that. The revenue of a sale, again, either in its current condition or some sort of restored condition, commands anywhere from 250 to 300 per square foot and would be a one-time revenue source for the city in the 2.5 to $3 million range. Pros and cons of retaining it as a city facility. Obviously, you know, there's some great benefit to the city to retain it. We'll never get an opportunity like this to build another facility. We don't have any facilities that are underutilized or vacated at this point. So it's one of those, you know, kind of golden eggs for, for the city to consider to, to keep. When you think about the next community center or whatnot, South 50, probably in the 10 to 12, 15-year time range, you know, generates revenue, and we can spread some costs over the first couple of years. It does meet your, several of your financial objectives and also some general plan goals. The cons, of course, is, you know, we may not realize revenue immediately, and it will require ongoing maintenance and eventually some full-time staffing. Pros and cons of leasing, certainly some near-term revenue generation, for sure, offset by a little bit of maintenance costs as well. The cons, you know, could be anywhere from, you know, just, you'd have to invest in probably bringing it up to code and maintaining it and the parking arrangement. And we'd probably, you'd probably want to encourage a tenant that was compatible with the existing facilities and activities at the park. Pros and cons of selling, city receives, of course, the one-time windfall of cash, which would, you know, obviously is very appealing. But the cons, however, could be just kind of an unintended outcome if declared a surplus property, and it's a one-time revenue source, and still may be on the hook for some, you know, certain repairs and just kind of the exposure of putting it on that affordable housing list. So in summary, there's, you know, like I said, at least three options and probably variations on the theme. You know, should the, should the council wish to direct staff to further evaluate any of these, it might be appropriate to, you know, for us to come back with more detail about what kind of revenue and how that would look like. And, you know, that's where we could provide some more, you know, dimension to it, certainly on the city side. Leasing, I don't think there's a lot of flux right now in the market, so that's probably a good, fairly good number and just, you know, what, what sort of condition you'd like to lease it in, and obviously the pros and cons of selling. So direction to staff is, what we're seeking is just direction from, from council on, if you'd like us to come back with a little more detail on, on any of these options, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, excellent. So we're going to do this as a public hearing. So questions about the presentation first? We'll ask for comments and then.
I have no questions.
Bring it back. Question?
Lorraine, you may not have thought this far down yet, but if we were to retain it and use it for programming, would that change what's done at the senior and arts center, or?
It could, and that could, that could help relieve some of the impact that's there now. One of the aspects of the overcrowdiness is our youth ceramics, youth. One of the aspects of the overcrowdiness is our youth ceramics, youth arts, and it would be an ideal fit over there. That could help free up some of the program, you know, the program, programming on, you know, space there. So, that, that is kind of a, a real, kind of obvious sort of, of switch there. And then, you know, we, we've thought about so many different programs that have served our community now because we're not really replacing like a daycare sort of situation. We actually do preschool, so we do traditional preschool sort of setting. So, we, we feel like that could also serve the client, you know, the, the customer who really just wants their child in preschool for three hours a day and get them ready for, for kindergarten. So, we kind of see that as being a, a great place to do that.
But so this would still be the senior and art center, we just kind of have arts and stuff happening in two locations?
Yeah. And there might be, like I've, I think I've mentioned it before, this could even be a multi-generational sort of thing. That's been kind of a newer sort of theory and concept that seems to be quite appealing in, in cities right now of having an opportunity for older generations to, to meet and read and, and, you know, interact with. But that could still be possible there. But we feel like the impactedness is mostly on the senior and art side and there's a nice synergy between our gallery and the art that comes out of that, those programs. And we could still do a kiln and some art for youth there and still, and create kind of a, another, another art hub there as well.
And Vice Mayor Quino, you know, pre-COVID, just a, a walk through the senior and art center on any given day, you know, it, it just absolutely bursting at the seams. I mean, and, you know, any daily or weekly user of that will pull you aside and say, "Help, we need help, we need more room." You know, that each function, the senior side and the art side, really does deserve its, its own dedicated space. And so, we do envision kind of a, you know, a duality between the two.
Questions?
No, I think, I see that, you know, if city maintains under your department, you're already thought through, you know, what programs you can bring because the revenue dollars you are showing is reflecting all the research you have already done, even though it is not here. So, I want to appreciate that. Thank you.
No questions.
Okay, excellent. Do we have any public comment?
You have one request to speak this evening from Sandy Hilton.
Welcome.
Thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. Sandy Hilton, eleven ninety-two Manning. I don't know a, a lot of you and you probably don't know me, but I'm a, a former city employee. Worked in the Parks and Recreation Department for twenty years, the last seven as the Community and Cultural Services Manager. Having a hard time hearing me? Okay. Oh, okay. And so, I retired about seven years ago and now I'm wearing a different hat for the city as a pottery instructor at forty-eight Natoma and have really been enjoying the time there. And the interesting thing to see the impacts of recreational programs with both my hats. When I started here in nineteen ninety-three, we were hard-pressed to find space and develop programs for this rapidly growing community. We looked to house programs wherever we could. We put programs in old construction trailers. We developed partnerships with the school district to offer programs on their school sites and we used every nook and cranny we could find to meet the growing needs of the community. Some of our programs are still housed in some of those spaces that aren't specifically designed for them. Many years ago, I advocated for the use of the Brighton School Site for recreation use, but watched disappointed as a public-private partnership was developed and ultimately the site was leased to Brighton. Not that it was a bad decision, but you now have the opportunity to utilize that facility for the greater community good as a true community center to provide multiple services for youth. As you heard in Lorraine's report, the facility could serve as a hub of activities for youth and their families. Preschool programs that develop social and cognitive skills. After-school programs that keep children safe and give them a sensible longing. Summer in school break camps that not only offer safe places to be, but fun, enriching experiences. After-school and evening classes in arts, dance, music, sports are all possibilities as well. It's hard to put a dollars and cents number on the value of assets like this, but study after study shows that community centers build better communities, they build safer communities, and they have an economic impact on the city by increasing property values and attracting business to the city. These are all solid reasons for considering using Brighton School to provide valuable city services. It's what makes Folsom distinctive by nature. Demand for some of these services is evident by the waitlists on many of the programs. As a teacher at forty-eight Natoma, I've seen the growth in programming and the constant struggling to juggle the limited space that we have with the regular program to accommodate some of the youth programs. It's not that we don't want them there, but it's hard to constantly be juggling all, all of these programs. And now we have an opportunity to house those in a facility that's better suited for their needs and then free up some of the space at forty-eight Natoma for the programming that it was intended for. And that, that is not to say, again, the art side of the building is for all ages. So, having the youth there is not inconsistent with the use, but the demand has grown on the adult side that we just, just don't have enough adequate space to house everything there. Let's see. Additionally, Folsom is growing so rapidly with new residents coming in daily. And in the new area of Folsom, as Lorraine mentioned, the buildup for meeting their recreational needs is years away. Those residents are going to seek those services on already impacted programming on, that currently exists. Some of that need could be handled at this site. So, I hope you'll give serious consideration to supporting the development of Brighton School Site as a recreation center that will add to the current inventory of the already great facilities that the city of Folsom has. And all of those contribute to making Folsom one of the most desirable cities in California in which families want to live. Thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy.
Any other public comment?
No.
Last call, anybody in the room? Okay, all right, excellent. I guess discussion, Carrie?
I just, I appreciate the opportunity to start only because I'm, having spent all of the time that I've sat up here and prior to that on the planning commission, this is in fact a unique situation. And at the time, it was being considered the only, this, which adds to the whole thing about the parking really belongs to the park. The only use that the Parks and Rec Commission, the Planning Commission and the City Council were willing to consider that was not directly operated by the city was a school. And it was, you know, not, not an adult school. It was, it was basically kind of, it had to be in the, basically in the elementary and daycare range. And the reason for that was because for the most part, that, that school-related use in that building would not impact the use of those parking spaces, which were predominantly going to use by people attending the park on weekends and later in the evening. So, it was, it was a really, really good synergy. That was the only use that anybody was willing to entertain at that, at that time. I don't see that that has changed, not one iota. And I know we've had conversations over the last several years about certain facilities with it scattered around the city that the city owns that maybe the city shouldn't own. My personal feeling in this case is there isn't another use that we could bring in there. We didn't have any interest in bringing in somebody else coming in and backfilling for Brighton Schools. There is a, a parking issue. I think the condition of the building and the fact that it really is set up for that, for that kind of a use that would, that would mesh entirely with moving some of the arts programs and kid-related programs into that building once it's been rehabbed and made ADA accessible up to current code is really the, the best possible use of that facility for all of the reasons that Sandy said and for the reasons that Lorraine indicated earlier on. I have, this is just me personally, I have no interest in selling the building. I have no interest in leasing the building. I think we need to retain that building because that's the only way that we have control over a building that is in the middle of a neighborhood, that is next to an elementary school and that the parking is already dedicated to the park. So, that's the only thing that I want to see is for the city to retain it and pretty much go down the, the path that Lorraine described earlier. So, that's, that's where I am on it.
Sensible advice. Sarah?
Yeah, I think it's kind of interesting that this presentation followed the budget discussion because it, it would be kind of, you know, tempting to, to sell or lease it, but, but I agree with Carrie. I think selling or leasing it would be short-sighted. I think this is, you know, a unique opportunity and because it is located within the park and the challenges with the parking, it, it makes sense to keep it a city-owned facility. The only thing that I would request is that in determining the programming and, and its uses and stuff, that gets vetted through the, the Parks and Rec Commission.
And I agree with that. And if that stove in there is gas, I don't see any, any real need for a kitchen in that facility and maybe that's where the kiln goes.
YK, your thoughts?
I, I echo what, you know, Sarah and Carrie said. I'm sure, maybe I'm interested to see, you know, what other programs, you know, innovative way we are thinking to bring it to there. Just a thought because I don't think so it is going to fill the overflow from the senior center, but it may have quite a bit of, you know, opportunities. Right? Folsom is always, you know, distinctive by nature, so we are, can be creative in programs, bringing them too. I'm for it. And the last one is, no, not selling, for sure, right? We'll try it seriously and if we are not succeeding, then we can come back and talk about what we can do on that option. Thank you.
Rosario?
I am not interested in leasing or selling it. I, I'm a believer that a healthy community puts a big emphasis on arts and culture. And just, I think it builds a healthy community. There's a booklet that I used to get on a yearly basis that had a, a, just a series of things that the city offered for families, photography, kids where they can learn. I don't know, there was a Lego class or there were so many other programs. And I remember at the time thinking, "Oh, gosh, we live in an amazing community that offers so much to families that only builds healthy young people." And so, I, I, I'm a big believer of keeping it. And I, I love that we can, you know, put it into the, you know, Parks and Rec and offer classes however that the city decides that it would be best used. I, I would support that.
Okay, terrific. Well, I think, I, I'll make it unanimous that I don't think any of us are interested in selling the building. I will take a slight contrarian view and it's in light of having just done the budget workshop and been considering what our financial situation is at the moment. I, I would, I would like us to take a stab at backfilling a daycare into there because that is also a very valuable service to the community, having that available to people. And there's, if you have any, you know, friends that have young kids, it's extremely expensive and partly because the demand is high and the availability is very low. So, I don't think there's any harm in trying to pursue that, at least as a, you know, maybe it's a backup plan, maybe it's the first pass, but, and that's based on the, just simple economics that we have an asset that we can derive revenue from, that can then help to fund facilities that are purpose-built or modified more specifically for all those programs we've been discussing.
But we can do that, I think, you know, regardless of what the programs are. And I honestly think that typical of our staff, they are generally pessimistic about the revenue stream. So, I think that could be great.
If in fact, we can lease it for twenty thousand dollars or something approaching that monthly, that's going to generate immediate revenue that's more than twice what it will, what it will generate as a facility for park services.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I'm just, I'm just saying, it, it was purpose-built to be a daycare. It's already set up that way. The repairs, that's, every building has to have that kind of repair work and we'd have to do those things even if we moved our programs into it. So, I, I'm looking at it, contrarian only to the extent that this could be a catalyst for revenue to help expand the programs that we've all been discussing because I think they're fantastic and they should, there should be more of them. But I also would like to see that we have purpose-built facilities for those programs so that they are adequate in size. Because even that addition of the ten thousand square feet or whatever it turns out to be that's usable at Brighton, that will not, you know, that will not be the thing that fills the gap in program space. We need something bigger than that and we need it in multiple locations. We need it south of Fifty. And we're kind of at this weird convergence right now that we're, you know, we had the discussion earlier tonight about stop signs and, you know, how many residents there are in the plan area. We're at this point where we've got this convergence of some budget pressure and a need for a lot more and bigger facilities that are part of our community center or distributed community center. So, that's the only reason that I'm taking kind of the tack that I'd like to see us try and lease it and then backfill it with programs if that's unsuccessful to the extent that it's generating revenue. So, anyway, I, I, it's not the hill I want to die on, but it's a thought.
Respond to that. So, because when you say daycare, I would want to make sure that we check with the school district to make sure that we're not competing with the student care programs that, that those campuses have. And Natoma Station would have its own.
Yeah, I'm talking about, you know, kids up to, you know, school age. So, a genuine daycare center for young, young children.
But at, at this point, we've never had anybody, in fact, I don't believe that we even had anybody that was interested at the time that we leased it to Brighton, it was only Brighton.
There would be no harm then in putting out a request for proposals to see if there is anybody. And if there's not, absolutely put the, put the ceramics class in there.
And, and right now, there's a ton of vacant, vacant space in Folsom. So, I don't, I don't see that happening in the short term.
But not, not with, not with toilets and bathrooms that are set up for, you know, two to five-year-olds. It wouldn't, it wouldn't have to be pulled out and redone for a daycare to go into there. Those are sized correctly. Bathrooms don't need to be completely torn apart necessarily in this instance. The damage, the, the, the largest part of the damage that was evident in those photos is water staining and dirt and some paint job. It's paint that needs to be done. So, like I said, yeah, I'm taking a little bit of a contrarian view. I don't disagree with you guys that the, you know, park programs should expand. And if there, if there are no takers on the building, then absolutely we should use it that way because it is perfectly situated for those uses, just as you said.
Well, I think part of it was too was if it gave us the ability to expand our preschool program that currently is at the sports complex, that could be revenue generating as well. But I do understand your, your point.
Yeah, yeah.
We're, we're just, we're very much sorely lacking for space. And, you know, Lorraine hit on that, as did, as did Sandy. It's, we, we don't have a place to put these programs. You know, there's, we're, we're squirreling away preschoolers in our nature center and our community center in the rooms that we're supposed to be renting out at the sports complex. For birthday parties, we're putting preschoolers, you know, so it's like, that's, that's the challenge we find ourselves in.
So, are we doing a preschool there then or are we putting ceramics classes there?
Well, I'm just saying that in general, in all total programming out of the Parks and Rec Department, we just don't have room. We just don't have enough facilities. So, that is a challenge. I get completely what you're saying.
Listen, we don't need, we don't need to solve what is the absolute most constrained program that should move. I'm just suggesting that if we can generate revenue that helps us solve that problem more globally because even, I don't think that ten thousand square feet is going to solve the problem. It will be absorbed instantaneously and overwhelmed.
It will, it will help, but, you know, you're right, there's probably, you know, far, there's probably excessive need to the ten thousand.
My point is we need a whole nother building the size of the sports complex.
Can I get just clarification? So, hypothetically, it gets leased out, it's two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year, but if it was city-operated at the third year, it would generate more or less around a hundred and thirteen thousand.
Yeah, so, so it's a matter of about a hundred thousand dollars-ish.
Yeah, so by year three, we expect to be bringing over, a little over a hundred thousand and then moving from there, depending on programming.
And that, that's assume, that's assuming there's somebody that actually wants to move in and operate it, that specific use.
A lease?
Yeah. That's all.
You're in total, to your opinion, I have no interest in a lease. I want the city to keep it.
Yeah.
So, the direction is?
I, I think my colleagues have said that they would prefer to see park programs... I, I think my colleagues have said that they would prefer to see park programs or city programs moved in there. And I'm, like I said, it's not the, I'm happy with that result too.
I know you made a comment, you know, let them try whether there is any takers, which means are we leaning towards leasing option first as a five-member team, right? It's unfair once, you know, we put out there and somebody interests and the five-member team is not favoring that option, you know.
Yeah, I mean, the only, the only reason to pursue a lease is for a very discreet, specific use. And if it is going to be revenue generating to the extent that was described, right? If it's not going to generate that much revenue, throw that overboard and press forward with city programs. That would be my suggestion. But like I said, I, you know, everybody has spoken and clearly.
Mine is mainly, I think, for Lorraine. You put a nice, you know, the operational revenue you're bringing up. You know, we usually take that as a, you know, you have done all your research and you are coming forward with some proposals. So I'm, I'm thinking towards that one more. Yes, at the end of the day, we will get some revenue. And if we are unsuccessful, maybe a year after year, then we can put this back on the table. You know, we tried a year or two. We are unable to fill the, there is no, not many people are, you know, craving for those new programs and we are not doing anything, no positive.
No, I, I don't think that's, there's any possibility that's going to happen.
Yeah.
We've, as Sandy said, we've already got, 30% of the programs have waiting lists.
Yeah, if you build it, they will come for sure. Okay, so I guess then the advice is, let's look at city programs and renovations to that building and, you know, ask for some input from the Parks Commission. I don't think it necessarily needs to come back to us though, so.
Okay, we will, we will keep you apprised however, you know, going forward. Thank you, everyone.
All right, city manager report.
All right, good evening, everyone. As you may have heard, there is new CDC guidance that has been released this week regarding those who are fully vaccinated. Highlights include that fully vaccinated individuals can gather indoors with fully vaccinated people without wearing a mask, and they can gather indoors with unvaccinated people from another household, which is good news and headed in the right direction. Speaking of Parks and Rec, our spring break camp, camps registration is open. Spring break is right around the corner, and you can register your child for week-long spring break camps. Camps are available in tennis, zookeeping, soccer, basketball, and more. And you can learn more in our March-April 2021 rec guide, which Councilmember Rodriguez referred to at www.folsom.ca.us/recguide. And the Sacramento Regional Water Authority, in partnership with the city of Folsom and other local water suppliers, hosts free educational webinars throughout 2021. So you can learn about how much water does your landscape really need on Thursday, March 25th at noon. You can learn about drought-tolerant landscaping on Wednesday, March 31st at noon. And you can learn about creating a pollinator garden on April 14th at noon. And you can learn more and register at bewatersmart.info/webinars. And that's all I have, mayor.
Excellent, okay. Council comments? Carrie, anything?
Just the usual caution about red light running, stop sign running, people being out walking their dog or just going for a walk in all-black clothing. You cannot be seen. It's raining tonight. It hopefully will get, will get some more rain in the next couple of weeks. And that only makes all of those bad situations significantly worse. But the red light running and, and the speeding is just, it's getting worse and worse and worse and worse and worse. And people, you just need to leave earlier. The, you know, the road doesn't belong to you just because you have the newest car on the road. And you're going to hurt somebody or yourself and ruin everybody's, certainly their day, if not the rest of your life. So please drive as if the rules of the road actually do apply to you.
Thank you. Sarah?
And happy St. Patrick's Day.
So as you know, the city manager and I sit on the Tourism and Economic Development Corporation board. At our meeting last week, Folsom Lake College President Whitney Yamamura took us through a report that the college commissioned on the Harris Center. So some experts on, you know, performing arts centers took a look at the programming and the revenue and all that sort of stuff and made some recommendations. So it is available on the Folsom Lake College website, or if you shoot me a text, I will send you the link to it. But I think it's worth, it's worth reading. They make a lot of recommendations about programming, about kind of changing some of the membership levels, benefits to season ticket holders, that sort of thing, other ways to generate revenue so that, that facility can be self-sufficient.
Outstanding. YK?
Awesome. I started attending the regional meetings, you know. I joined one with Sarah as an alternate just to see it. And I myself as a primary, the Sacramento Cable Commission. So that's an interesting one. So it's all learning and, you know, seeing how things are going on. And I was with the mayor two by two and listening and understanding how the two by two works also. And also, I think, as, you know, community members, I started meeting some of the groups in the community, started with the historic district and talking to them. They got a chance to see that, you know, they approached me and I said, you know what, perfect time, let's talk. Got to meet the residents. And the last one is, I know our finance director asked us the fourth question. Are you seeing any services which are not adding that much value to the residents, right? So I'm looking at the camera to Folsom, please, if you see it, you know, I'm seeing it, you know, please let us know. You know, we, we are educated as much as you tell us whether the services are helping you or not. So I'm still looking at the camera, asking Folsom, please let us know if any services you think is not that much value add or you see something is much better than other thing. Let us know soon. It is a budget season. Thank you, Folsom. Good evening.
I would like to give Chief Hellman thank you for a department tour last week. I really enjoyed it. I think resident, Folsom residents already know that our Folsom Police Department is a very dynamic organization. So I've enjoyed that. Recently, we've seen a lot of stolen bikes that are, that are posted on social media. And so it reminded me of something from the ride-along I had with Sergeant Zavala last month. And that was, get the serial number on your bike and know it. Because once a bike is stolen, if you don't have the serial number, they can't trace it back to you if and when the bike is found. And that leads me to every, if you follow the Folsom Police Department on social media, they have every, so often post, and it's called the 9:00 PM routine. Check your car, bring your valuables in, lock your car and your home, and turn your outside lights on. And then also congratulations to the historic district for a groundbreaking ceremony tomorrow on the shade structure. And this is really important because when our summer concerts are happening, the sun is hitting those, those groups. And I always felt bad for them. So this is a very exciting time for the district to get that shade structure going. So, thank you.
Very good. Yeah, you stole my first item on my list is that we're putting some shade structures down on the, on the Zittle Amphitheater, which are going to make it way more usable and comfortable for, for people and for performers down there. Had our policy innovation meeting at SECOG earlier this week, and we continue to work on sort of legislative affairs that affect transportation funding. There are a couple of bills passing through the assembly, or that have been proposed in the assembly at the beginning of this current session that would dramatically ramp up the goals of SB 375 in terms of changing timeframes to be, to accelerate it, which are extraordinarily problematic because, as was stated earlier by Ms. Hedinger, most everybody really loves their gas-powered car still. So unless we can transfer everybody to electric cars really rapidly, those, those bills are going to be counterproductive. And then we continue to advocate, we've got, representing the entire region, we have some lobbyists and the whole group of us working on getting, trying to get funding from the state for our Green Means Go program, which is the actual good work of trying to reduce automobile emissions here in the region by finding ways to reduce vehicle miles traveled. So we're, we're working on the right things. The speed with which some legislators would like it to happen is unrealistic. And then finally, I was, I signed on with the mayor of Rancho Cordova, both the, both the assembly members, our state senator, and the two county supervisors that are, represent our Folsom-Cordova Unified School District on a letter with the, with the school board to the California Department of Public Health earlier this week, asking them to please approve the waiver that was requested so that our seventh through 12th graders could return to school now throughout the Folsom-Cordova School District. So fingers crossed, and it wouldn't be a bad time for people to also write letters to CDPH on that account. So with that, I will draw our comments to a close. Thank you, everybody. And it is 8:10. We are adjourned.